We'll call the meeting to order. This is the November 20th meeting in the Yellow Springs Village Council. We actually just came in from executive session, so we have called the roll. And you will notice that council members Hemfling and McQueen are not here tonight. Everyone else is present, other three of us are. So announcements, we'll start with announcements. I'll go to Brian first. There's a lot going on this weekend that I'll talk about, but I'll start with Brian.
Yeah, I just want to mention a few things. First of all, I wanted to highlight the community Thanksgiving celebration that happens annually at the Presbyterian Church. Everyone is welcome. I will be making a turkey, so make sure to find mine. It'll be nice and juicy. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that the Yellow Springs Arts Council's Holiday Art Jumble opened last Friday, and so you can go Wednesday through Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00. Great gift giving, and it supports our local artists. The last thing that I wanted to highlight was November 28th, which is the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, is dubbed Giving Tuesday. And once again, the community will be, the nonprofits are joining together to do a lot of various accepting of donations, so take a look. It's a really great opportunity to support our local nonprofits.
Jerry?
As some of us have been able to get more rest and so forth, I think we all notice now that the time has jumped back and it's getting darker now in the evenings. And we do have quite a few students that participate in fall activity that are, when they go to school, it's light, but after their practice and so forth, it's getting dark and they will be riding their bikes back home. So I just want to stress on the community to, especially on West South College, to slow down and be on the lookout for our kids as they come home in the evenings on their bikes in or walking.
On that note, do we still have bike lights, Judy? So we still have bike lights that Judy and the PD are distributing. And local resident Carlos Landebroer has been distributing actual flashlights that you can carry in your hand. And he's got signs all over town with his contact information, but it's Carlos's computer. So if you want to go, if you want to find him in the red book, call Carlos and he can get you a flashlight. It's a really good program that he's doing. And he's actually, every Saturday, he's in front of Dark Star from 11:00 to 12:00. So this weekend, so Brian mentioned Thanksgiving, which we're all excited about. Then the next day, November 24th, we call Yellow Friday because it just can't be black here, and we don't have major sales and we don't open our stores at 4:00 in the morning or something. So, you know, it's a normal shopping day in Yellow Springs on Yellow Friday, but it's always fun. It'll start at 10:00 with the Bulldog Jog and Fun Run over at Mills Lawn. So you can either do a 5K or you can do a little run around the school. So that's always fun. Obviously, shopping in all of our shops. We have carriage rides, horse-drawn wagon rides from 2:00 to 5:00. That will start in front of the Little Art Theater. And then obviously, all evening, the restaurants and pubs and eateries will be open. And then Saturday is Small Business Saturday. So again, it's a time where we focus on shopping local and shopping small and supporting our local businesses. And so please do that. Please do your holiday shopping here in Yellow Springs.
And I have an announcement. As council is aware, and I think probably a lot of citizens are aware now, Jason Handy did resign his position with the village. He did this shortly before the last council meeting, and Jason's last day was last Friday. I looked back through some records today, and Jason started with the village in 1995 as a seasonal employee.
Wow.
And so he has decided to go and take on some other endeavors, and we wish him well. And he was a valued employee and he will be missed.
Yes. Thanks, Patty. Any other announcements? So we're not going to do the consent agenda because we just got the minutes, so we'll defer the minutes for November 6th to the November 18th meeting. Petitions or the review of the agenda, is there anything we need to add or remove from the agenda? It is a light agenda tonight since we do have two council members missing. Anything we need to change on the agenda, Brian, Jerry? Okay?
I don't think so.
Brian, would you review the petitions and communications?
Yeah, so we have three things. So Green County Public Health highlighted that this week until Wednesday is the annual Seat Belt Challenge. So we are hoping that our Yellow Springs high school students do better than they did the last time, looking for 100% seat belt usage. Rachel McKinley, our village treasurer, submitted a fact sheet about the STAR Ohio Program, which stands for, what is it, State Treasury Asset?
Resource.
Resource, yes. Which gives us a better return on our deposits. And we also got a letter and several documents from Judith Hemfling about the study that's been referred to, that Wright State University was commissioned to do, related to stops, traffic stops, and I assume that we'll probably be talking about that at a later date. Okay?
And because of the fact that it was the subject of discussion at the last meeting, because there was some concern over some of the information being released, we wanted to get the full report out as quickly as we could. So that's why the documents are in the packet without discussion, but as Brian said, we will be discussing that at the next meeting.
Yes.
On November?
December 4th.
Excuse me, December 4th. Okay. So moving into public hearings and legislation, first we have ordinance 2017-33. Let's read that in by title only.
Yes, this is repealing Section 1258.01 District Uses and Section 1262.08 Specific Requirements of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and Enacting New Section 1258.01 District Uses and New Section 1262.08 Specific Requirements.
Can I get a motion, please?
So move second.
Okay. Denise, hi.
Hi, this is removing short-term rental units as a conditional use in the district table of uses and adding transient guest lodging as a permitted use in this district schedule. It also is removing short-term rentals in 1262.08 in the conditional use section of the zoning code, and it does not, transit guest lodging will not appear in this section at this time because it is being considered a permitted use for now.
Okay. Any comments or questions, council members? This is the second reading, and I will open the public hearing for public comment and questions. Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Sims.
Yes.
Howsh.
Yes.
Wintrae. Yes.
I would like to take a minute to thank Denise for all of the hard work that she has done on this transient guest lodging. She and Melissa both have worked really hard on this, and I just want to acknowledge and appreciate the work they've done.
That's great. It's absolutely, it's been a long discussion. Next is ordinance 2017-41.
This is approving the 2018 annual appropriations and declaring an emergency in the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio.
Can I get a motion, please?
So move second.
Okay, Melissa?
Okay, so this is the second reading of this ordinance. There was one change from the original ordinance in the first reading, and that was a reduction in the amount of $20,000 from the public safety total line that came out of Personnel Services. Oh, I'm sorry. It did not come out of Personnel Services, it just came out of the public safety total. And therefore, it reduced the total general fund appropriations by $20,000. And then it also decreased the grand total appropriations by $20,000. So the new total for the total general fund appropriations is $3,293,092. And the grand total appropriations for all funds is $10,543,566. And I had also given a brief PowerPoint presentation on revenues and expenditures from the general fund and the enterprise funds, and that presentation was in the packet for council and for the public to review.
Great, very nice. So that's it for me, unless anybody has questions.
Well, I guess we probably should highlight some of those items that are noted as 0% or are a little bit more than 0%, but I guess much less than 1%, right?
All from the?
I saw a couple of the charts, just?
Yeah, the general fund expenditures, we have some very, very small departments. Mediation is a $7,500 budget, so it doesn't even show up as registering because the overall general fund is over $3 million. So that's such a small amount that it doesn't even equal out to 1%. So those, if I would have probably expanded those percentages out a few decimal points, some of those smaller departments would have registered. But they do have budgets and they are listed out, but they, you know, were too small to register as a whole percent.
Sure. And I guess this is a good time for me to emphasize that the amount of spending that we do on, you know, things like commissions is also less than 1%. I think it's really important work that our commissions do, but it is a very small amount.
And Melissa, could you just briefly review, maybe do a little bit of a comparison with 2016, or excuse me, 2017? Because we're, the budget is looking strong, would you?
Yes.
Our revenues are strong, came in a little bit higher than expected.
Yes, the revenues were approximately $700,000 more, and I'm going completely by memory. I don't have the full expanded version in front of me this evening, but the revenues for 2017 were approximately $700,000 ahead. And part of that was, well, the bulk of that was from income tax increases, and then the sale of Sutton Farm did come into that, into play there, which was, I believe, $260,000. And then the rest of that was income tax as far as the general fund is concerned. But with the 2018 budget, I did, I did receive in the mail this week and last week, we do have portions of the water plant payment, so it wasn't included in this budget. And they're not full payments, but I will have to do a supplemental appropriation for a partial payment that it will be deducted December 29th this year for the water plant. So that will have to change with the 2018 budget as well. So they came way too late in the year for me to be able to take into consideration for the 2018 budget.
Okay. And the expenditures are no extraordinary, other than the payments for the water plant?
No.
No extraordinary, and we're keeping very close to what we were?
Yes, and we paid quite a bit of debt down to across some of the funds, so that's also a good thing. So, yeah, it's, the budget is the best it's been since I've been here.
And money going into capital funds and things.
Yes.
So it's a very, very good budget, very positive, which is always nice to see. I will open the public hearing. Did I already open the public hearing? I don't think I did.
I don't think you did.
I will open the public hearing for comments or questions from citizens. Seeing and hearing none, I'll bring it back to council table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Howsh.
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Wintrae.
Yes.
And again, it's the end of another long budget road, and I want to thank Melissa for all the work she's done because the budget is usually really difficult and time-consuming for her, and she always does a good job on it.
Thank you.
Resolution 2017-49. This is awarding a bid for construction of new crew quarters for all public works, electric, water distribution, and sewer collection employees on the property known as the Sutton Farm to Overver Thompson Company.
Can I get a motion, please?
So move second.
Is Johnny going to do the presentation? Great.
Yeah, I would just like to preface this by saying, if council remembers, we did have an inspection by Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation. They performed a safety inspection at Sutton Farm earlier in the year, and they found several issues, which I think Judy's getting ready to show some pictures of the different issues that they found, some safety issues and other health issues. So council had agreed that we would look into taking the design that was done several years ago for Sutton Farm and having that updated and putting it out to bid. And this is the culmination of that entire process that we've been working on all year. So Johnny?
Evidently, you don't have the old pictures.
We didn't put old ones up, we just put your new ones. The old ones are in the packet.
The old building that you are looking at that has the crew sitting in it, I see Karen, that's about 160 square foot that feeds, we all, there's not, there's not even a lawn in there every day with table, refrigerator, microwave. The restroom and locker room is about another 300 square foot. And then one side that we've actually moved out of is, because of the condition of it, it's roughly about 140 square foot. So total, it's 600 square foot. When it rains, the water comes under the walls and goes to the nearest drain, which is in the locker room, so passes all the way through. So we have come up with several different plans. This is the most economic, and it is by tearing the old one off and building a new one right on the existing, it does a couple of things. We're able to reuse the sanitation, the leaks filled, by being able to attach right to that. The new crew quarters will be, we're going to leave the existing locker room, just completely updated. The old bathroom will become the mechanical room, and it will get a new electric furnace, new electric water heater, and the existing, we just had the new well system buttoned. So that will all be updated, rotated. It will also have a washer and dryer, which we do not have now. If we get mud, sewage, dirt, we take it home. And that was one of the things that the Bureau of Workers' Comp said, that's not to happen. EPA will take the same thing. We're supposed to leave the village where we found it. So by leaving those two rooms on, it gives us about another 1,000 square foot that we're going to add on to it. The men's restroom will be a slash locker room, will have two showers, one stall and a urinal with 11 lockers to accommodate for the shower situation. And then we included the women's locker room, will have one shower, one stall, and three lockers in case we have a female in the future.
So what's the, what is the old locker room going to be?
The old locker room will be the, it will still be the locker room.
Okay.
We're just going to put a bench in the middle so we can sit down, put our boots on and stuff. But then you'll have a separate locker room and a shower area for your other clothes. So this right here shows the actual, top left-hand side is the old restrooms, is being turned into the mechanical area. The right is where the lockers are going to be, and you can see where you come straight through. You got a little table there. That's a much larger area, it's probably 750 square foot area where you can have training, you can have your lunch area, and?
Can you zoom on the floor plan itself?
Yes.
It's also, instead of just regular concrete, we also did ceramic tile on the floor with the cobase to go up to where we can get it cleaned up, get mud in there, you'd be able to clean it all down. There's going to be a new concrete pad out front to where we can have a picnic table sit on the concrete, so you don't want to eat inside during the summertime, you can actually have a little picnic table outside. Vinyl siding and new windows, new AC unit, and then the new kitchen area. Now, the price does not include the appliances, we're just going to take that out of the budget.
I know somebody that might be able to help you with that.
I'd like to, I know that probably a question that a lot of people would have with this design is why do you need washers and dryers and showers? And as Johnny pointed out, there are any number of chemicals that both of our crews, well, all three of our crews could get into in the course of a day. And they, the EPA does not want them taking chemicals, raw sewage, et cetera, home to their, to their families. And so this has long been a requirement, a suggestion is becoming a requirement that these facilities are provided for workers in case they are exposed to any of these things that, so they don't take this home to their families and potentially spread some type of disease or illness that they get exposed to. Because our employees have the proper vaccinations and things for this, but their families don't necessarily have those things.
I personally don't think it needs a lot. When you say sewage and home, I don't think you need to explain much more than that.
And we do have a washer and dryer already, or that's?
No.
That's part of the?
Once the building is built, then we will take out a washer and dryer and take that out of the record.
Okay.
And we do have a Sam's card, and Sam sells washers and dryers and things, and so?
Is, I mean, it seems like it should be a little bit commercially rated. Okay, good.
Okay.
So Johnny, do you have anything else?
It's been a long process.
Yes, it has. I mean, I, well, I can tell you, I took off this whole building. I measured this entire building about 10 years ago or 15 years ago, when we were going to just remodel the interior. And it looks surprisingly much worse than it did that long ago. So it's really horrible. I mean, it was bad then. I'm, you know, I feel really bad that you guys had to live with this for so long, so?
And council did say that, you know, along with the sale of part of Sutton Farm, that my request was part of that, go back into making it possible to have these crew quarters redone. And so I just appreciate that council was willing to let us go through this process and get these new crew quarters.
Any questions or comments, council? Questions or comments from citizens? Seeing and hearing none, we will, oh, this is a resolution. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thanks, Johnny. And Judy, let's read this next one in, in full?
Certainly. This is declaring November 25th, 2017, Mayor Fobert Day in the Village of Yellow Springs. Whereas David Fobert has served the Village of Yellow Springs as its mayor for 26 years, and whereas in those 26 years, mayor's court has been held 624 times, 312 couples have been married, and 126 proclamations have been delivered. And whereas Mayor Fobert has attended myriad village events, to which he has contributed his support, his wit, and his genuine passion for his village and its diverse and many splendored people. And whereas Mayor Fobert has left a lasting impression on this small village that we today wish to acknowledge, now therefore be it resolved that Section 1, November 25th, 2017, shall be recognized as Mayor Fobert Day in the Village of Yellow Springs and is intended as a day of celebration and joy.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, please?
So move second.
And just, I had talked about the events that November 25th is Small Business Saturday, and even though we're not talking about business here with Mayor Fobert, just the whole focus on local and small town, it seemed as appropriate a day as any to celebrate all the service he's given to the village. We will miss him. And I can't believe we had the celebration for him last week, and nobody mentioned when he was mayor for the Wizard of Oz. So he was, he, that was, he gave that performance. I think he quite enjoyed it. He was probably a little taller than he should have been, but otherwise, he, that was, I think, one of the highlights of his career. So we will definitely miss Mayor Fobert, but we do welcome Pam Kanai, who is our new mayor. Will be our new mayor as of January 1st at midnight, or 12:01, I think I would say. I know that well. Any other comments?
It was a great celebration.
It was. Thank staff for putting that together.
Yeah, the cake was great.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I like picture cakes. It was a good picture of the mayor. Thank you to the news for sending that over, because that was the picture from the news that was on the cake.
Oh, nice. Now is the time in the agenda where we hear comments from citizens who, about items that are not on the agenda. We ask you to come up to the microphone, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes. Al?
I'm Al Schlier. I'm a member of the Justice System Task Force. I'm sorry I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting, but I did watch the video, used the permit once, and I just felt the need to come here and briefly share my view. I'd like the council to know that I voted with David Turner and a majority of the committee to not send the report to you until it was put into a public forum. I did not do this to protect the police department. I've had serious concerns about the police department for many years, but I just felt that we wanted to do this properly. I think it's very unfortunate that David was singled out in the post because it was a committee action, not his individual action. I think you got the report. I'm not really happy about it. John has graciously given me the spreadsheet of all the data, worked very hard on it, and it was an important effort. And I'm trying to do an analysis of it, I think will be more useful than just putting a number out based on a seven-year period. So for example, I'm trying to determine if the racial disparities in citations has improved or gotten worse over the time period. And I'm trying to determine if the statistics are skewed by maybe one or two police officers that are no longer with the staff of being outliers and they're giving citations. I think if we have a better analysis, it'll be more valuable to the chief and to you to interpret the data. I just really think the way it's going is not, is not very useful. It's unfortunate that the task force, which has worked so well, has been put in disarray by the actions of one member. We spent two and a half hours trying to do mediation at our last meeting last Tuesday, and can't, don't feel we made much progress. David Turner asked us not to say anything really aggressive, because he really wants to do one-on-one reconciliation, to try to get a resolve between the two individuals. I think if they can work it out, then the committee can maybe succeed. So I just want to share one of his?
Thank you, Al.
I think so.
Anyone else? Okay. Go into old business. Timeline for boards and commissions, is this something that you worked on?
Yeah, but I think I'll let Judy start.
Oh. Well, Brian and I met about this, just to sort of go over what had been discussed in the last council meeting and see if there were areas here that things could be firmed up a little bit. So I provided you with an updated guideline for commissions, committees, boards, kind of thing, that's sort of based on conversation between myself and Brian, and then based on that last conversation in council meeting. And I did speak about just having setups for interviews run through the clerk, just to streamline that process and make sure that the follow-up is smooth and things are done in a timely fashion, and I'm absolutely fine with that. I think that's just a matter of council finding that agreeable as well. One thing that I had really wanted to have added, and Brian was in agreement with it, was that all interviews follow EEOC guidelines. At present, there's no, there really aren't any guidelines for those interviews, and I think that's an important one to add.
Yeah, so I mean, I will just add to that, you know, a couple of things that I thought were important is, you know, we do have past legislation that highlights that when we do nominations, we should be highlighting the merits of the candidates, which I guess I would like to see us do moving forward, so that that is on the record, what our decisions are based on. And I mean, I think otherwise, the other piece of this is Mary Ann and I will be talking about some of the updates to the ordinances. In particular, I think we, Karen had asked that the treasurer position be removed, so we'll do? we'll do, make some recommendations like that, and those will be coming to the December 4th meeting. But otherwise, I like the things that Judy has added. One other thing that I'm thinking about doing is kind of a best practices one-pager for commission members and council members as well, just to highlight, kind of pull out some of these main things, like getting the agenda out as soon as possible, so that we can put that on the website and on Facebook, so that citizens know what's going to be discussed at commission meetings. Also getting those minutes in, you know, ASAP. And the other thing I had noted was...
What do I have here?
Oh, making sure that we, any changes to meeting times are also noted right away, so that we can put that out there. So I think this is a great start. The last thing is Judy and I had kind of looked at an overall timeline that I think we'll try to put together for December 4th as well, that just lets people know, once they submit an application, when they should expect to hear. But I do think the idea of Judy doing the interviews and scheduling those makes a lot of sense across the board. It'll be, you know, on the record. We, you know, can then make sure that we're doing that in a timely manner.
And you had also, Brian, I regret bringing it up, spoken about, Karen had brought up the notion that the roles and responsibilities sheet is a little too general, a little too broad, and we talked about making that a more directed and coherent document. And I'm not sure if that's what you were referring to with your work with Mary Ann, if that's what you were going to address.
Yeah, I'm glad you highlighted that in particular. So I agree, you know, the behaviors for elected officials, the, you know, 100 or so items. I think we should pare that down to something more focused, so I thought that was a great recommendation.
And I also wonder if, you know, you're talking about a one-pager. I mean, it may be, is there a way to perhaps consolidate some of this to maybe one full page? I mean, I feel like there's a lot. We're kind of inundated. We're going from kind of nothing for the commissions to all of a sudden, we're just kind of inundating them. Plus, they do have the sunshine law training that they need to take. So, I mean, I'm just, I guess my suggestion would be if you could consolidate, maybe consolidate a little bit. And, I mean, I think if you're looking at that roles and responsibilities document, some of that, really, it is about best practices and could potentially be folded together.
That could be. I guess the document I'm thinking about, though, but I think that's a good point, is really more reminders of, get those minutes to Judy, you know, get that agenda, that kind of thing. But yeah, but I think that's a good point. And so Mary Ann and I are going to meet next week, and we'll look at it holistically.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, and we also added, and that, you know, it's certainly for your consideration, in light of the recent kind of issues with JSTF, was it under implementing directives and initiating projects? I think that my understanding is that council's intent when assigning a project, for example, just to energy board, can you bring us back information on this subject? Is that that will be publicly presented to council before it's disseminated in any other kind of an arena. And so we added that, and you can certainly weigh in on that, but that's there as well.
And Judy, while I'm thinking about it, one thing I just noticed yesterday was on the second document, that's got the different bullet points.
Yeah.
I guess just making the third bullet point clear that, I guess, you're going to follow up with candidates. Because it, right now, reads the council rep, but just so that it's consistent with the other ones.
Ah, gotcha.
Yep.
Chris, can I ask you a question about public record? So Judy's, the comment that Judy just made about things going to, coming to council before being disseminated publicly, and the comment, the point that was made, I think, by Lori Asplin last week in a letter to council, or the last meeting, that the report that was done for the JSTF was a public document immediately. Is that true?
The context of drafts can be complicated. I mean, you know, the body was convened, and they were working on a document that would be endorsed by the committee, that would have its recommendations or the information that it was intended to present to council. And I think that we see that in the packet tonight. The records retention schedule, and what's defined as a public record, does not necessarily include the keeping of a draft, because a draft does not reflect the official action of the public body. So I think that it really depends on, does that draft reflect something that you wanted to show? So if there are meeting minutes that are being made as part of the official acts of that committee, that would reflect the discussion that's been contemplated in the draft. So I think that, in that sense, I don't think that a draft necessarily becomes a public record automatically by virtue of the fact that it's a draft.
Okay. That's, no, that's, no, I think that's really clear. I mean, it does seem, it does seem as if there's got to be some kind of different, I mean, some kind of, I don't want to say wiggle room, but there is some difference. There's certainly a difference between a document that comes to council, having been prepared, and basically work product.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So are we done with this? So this will be on our agenda again on the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the updating nominating petition discussion. Brian, I think that that's really been something that you've been working on, and I know we've got a lot of documents in our packet, and I think that there are some at the table, so.
Yeah, so I'll just begin by saying, you know, this was something that we had talked about during the last election cycle, and we were reminded again that we needed to update our nominating petition document. I discovered when I ran again for council this time that Yellow Springs is unique in Green County in having its own document, which not only is it hard to read because it's so old and they can't make good copies of it, but also it had things like, you know, needing to get it notarized, and things that are not requirements according to state law and the ORC. The other piece of that was, I was handed an instruction document that didn't relate to our document, so even for me, who had done this three times, it was a bit confusing. So we decided that we should look at standardizing our document along with everybody else in the county. And I think I will turn it to Judy, because Judy has done some work on that, and then I can follow up with any other comments.
Yeah, so we started off by cleaning up that, cleaning up the document and making it clearer and easier to read, streamlining a few areas of it. And then the initial nominating petition that was in your packet was given to Brian by the Board of Elections as, well, this is the standard document. If you'd like to go to the ORC sanctioned document, this is it. I emailed Lynn McCoy today to just clarify and see if I could get an instruction sheet, and she said, oh, you've got the wrong thing. So what's at your table right now is in fact the correct nominating petition for...
So the first two pages or first three pages are what we're using now?
In the packet.
Of the original, yes. Of the original thing that was in the packet, yes.
Okay.
So, because what was given to Brian was the partisan nominating petition. This is the nonpartisan nominating petition, which asks for no political affiliations, does not require them.
Okay.
So that's clearly where we wanted to go with that. And they are in fact working on a new updated instruction sheet. Brian and I had the conversation about, we have home rule, we have charter communities, so there are a few things that we would want to let folks know. These are requirements of you in order to be able to run. They're very basic, that we could create a very simple instruction sheet that says, these are the requirements as far as the Village of Yellow Springs goes. Now go here and pick up your following petition and instruction form, to make it a much clearer, much clearer process.
But I thought, I thought part of the point of this was that there wouldn't be any difference.
Well, there may or may not be, but for example, we require that you be, you cannot have been the president, you cannot have been a village manager within X amount of time. There are a few little particulars to our charter. They're not, I mean, they're going to happen to someone once in a blue moon, but they're particular to our charter, so.
Well, our charter also has that 1%, you know, of the, what you call it, the registered voters.
Yeah.
That's not a standardized thing, so.
Yeah.
So there are a few small differences. Is there an intent, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter now. Is there an intent to keep that, or is there some thought that there will be charter changes recommended at some point?
It crossed my mind, but I think the first step is that we have that standardized form, and we don't, you know, require things like notarizing documents when it's, you know, when it's not required. But I think, you know, one thing that Judy's done is made it clear, as does the Board of Elections, how many signatures Yellow Springs needs. So they do tell you that when you go in. The problem again was their former instruction sheet was paired with the ORC form, not ours. So it didn't make sense.
I did just say one thing. When we had the charter review, and we're beyond the memory of it, and he is correct, we did have a discussion about that 1%. And it's deviated from what state law required and what the County Board of Elections was doing. The reason why we didn't change that is because that 1% actually requires less signatures to get on the ballot. So we felt that would create, make it easier for potential candidates, because they wouldn't have to, there's no signature.
That's right.
I assume we'll update the number, the census?
Well, it's actually not the census, it's the registered voters. So it's actually a different number.
Okay.
So.
And, I mean, Judy, related to that, on the general instructions, are we proposing to include this list, or?
The list of general instructions?
The five items?
I, Lynn was going to send their updated instruction sheet. So I think it's, I mean, this is a little bit of a work in progress, but if that instruction sheet goes over these five points, I would take this off.
Okay.
Just because if that number changes slightly and then is different from their instruction sheet, it's, we just, I think the goal, what you're trying to accomplish here is to eliminate confusion for someone who may be fairly new to this process, and eliminate factors that might cause them to back away or feel that they weren't qualified. So we're trying to just streamline it as much as possible. So as soon as I get that instruction sheet from her, then I'll circulate that around, so you can make that decision.
Because if I'm not mistaken, number four does not look accurate to me.
No, that's correct. That is correct.
Really?
Yes.
I thought you had to have it filed 90 days before.
No, no. No, 30 days prior to that.
Okay. And the other thing I did ask Lynn about was how far municipalities have gone to help with things like this, you know, like, could there be a sample form for people to look at? We can do those sorts of things, but Lynn did emphasize that we want to be careful about, you know, not misleading folks, so.
Right. Well, I mean, I think part of what happened with the county, my understanding is part of what happened is that, and I think this came from the Secretary of State's office, is that they're not allowed to give information.
Sure.
There are certain things that they're not really allowed to tell people.
Right.
I think if somebody asks them a very pointed question, they can answer it, but there is just not general information that they can give, so.
Right. And, yeah, that is true, but a municipality can do more if they want. So, I mean, so it's, it's helped me to think about, but to me, I think the biggest thing is streamlining our nominating petition.
And is this, this is just for council?
Council and mayor.
And mayor.
Council and mayor, and obviously, we don't have any control over school board.
Right.
Okay.
And also, they will not, you know, whatever form we use, once you hand it through the window and give it to them, and if you think of something, it's too late. When it goes in the window, it's gone. You can't, and they won't give it back.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if you've done something simple, like not sign it or something, they will not tell you.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, this, I mean, obviously, this is a good thing. We want to make it as easy as possible to serve, so, thanks.
Yeah, so then Judy, is the recommendation on the table to use the nonpartisan form that's on the table?
Well, I mean, I'm kind of throwing it to council's consideration, but I just think that's the simplest thing. We had a person who was disqualified simply because he downloaded the ORC form. He assumed he was in a good standing, kind of doing his own thing, doing his own research. That's a reasonable assumption to be able to make, I would think. And again, you know, our process excluded him. And so I think, again, to be inclusive, the more standardized we are, the better, but that's just me, so.
That's what I think, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you can, I mean, the idea that you could download it and not have to go to the Board of Elections, I think that there is, and so then that would say that whatever these instructions are, that we come up with whatever the county has, and so that would be somebody, something that somebody should do, though, is make sure they get the correct instructions, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good work.
So do we need to do anything?
It sounds like it's in progress.
I'll follow up with the instruction sheet and get with you about kind of finalizing that, the form instructions.
Is this something that will be a council decision? Will council vote on this?
I feel like it's a good idea to put that on the record.
Yes.
I agree, it makes sense to me.
Okay. So if we can do that, you think we can do that before the end of the year?
I don't see why not, yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Next is House Bill 179, discussion, sanctuary status implications. We have a lot of information in our packet about this. I assume she put some of that together, so we appreciate that. You're here to present to us.
Well, I prepare a brief statement, and then I'll field questions for you. As mentioned before, the Yellow Springs Police Department, we will not question, ID, detain, or arrest anyone solely based on immigration status. I've had some suggestions given to me to maybe elaborate on that some, and I'm working on that. But I would like to say, I understand how sensitive and important of an issue this is in our community. I am very concerned, though, that the public and extended discussions on this topic may bring too much attention to what is currently a non-issue. So I have any questions for you right now.
Brian, I think it might be good if you expound just a little bit on what, where your concern lies. Because right now, the way that the ICE laws and immigration laws and that read, this isn't something that directly affects our department, correct?
Absolutely. We do not enforce federal immigration laws. We simply do our job as law enforcement officers in the community. I did speak with the sheriff today. They are in the same kind of position as we. Once someone is detained and in jail, that's typically where something may occur. It's the most recent language and things that we could find, with the exception of the proposed House Bill 179, I think it was 2007 or '08. And so again, it's kind of been a non-issue.
Okay, so, again, I'll just mention a few things. I mean, you know, the reason why this came on our radar, of course, was because of House Bill 179. I checked this morning, there hasn't been any action on that bill since May of this year, which kind of follows with where a lot of these documents came from, which is Jessica Ramos, who is involved in immigration law and shared a lot of things that she's worked on with Dayton, which obviously would, you know, have more issues. Couple of things that occurred to me, one is if we... me. One is if we could get Green County's policy on this, because when I read these documents, it seems like a lot of it goes to the county sheriff. So it'd just be good to know, I guess, how Yellow Springs is potentially affected by the sheriff's decision, but I think it's good, what you've just shared with us, Chief Carlson. And then, I appreciate that you're looking at, you know, maybe just beefing up the language a little bit. I know that Jessica Ramos made some suggestions about some things that we might do. And one thing that popped out to me when I looked at these documents was the service for translation. Are we aware of that? Do our officers know if they had someone that didn't speak English?
Yes.
Who to call, or?
We do. We are limited to some extent, and that's something we need to expand as well.
And do we have this-
Do those have to be official, or can those be citizens?
They can be citizens.
And do we have this card that they referred to with the 90 languages?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. That was the only thing to me, you know, so I think if we just maybe, we don't have to have as detailed a policy as Dayton, but, you know, if we maybe just look at possibly adding a few more of those things.
And when you talked to Sheriff this morning, I think he said he was going to check into the policy and maybe get you a copy or something?
Correct.
Yeah. So if we could have that in the packet, that would just be good for us to understand.
Right.
But yeah, there was a lot of information in here, mostly because
So you, this is all stuff you put in the packet?
This was all given to us, and mostly just because I didn't want to pick and choose what I thought was relevant. So I just decided to share it all. So.
Good stuff.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Chief. Next is review of leadership training outcomes. Patty?
As council knows, in late 2016, council hired consultant Brenda Crainer, she's a professor at Wright State University, to conduct leadership and team building training with the village supervisory staff. And that staff included Melissa, Ruth Ann Lilick, Judy Kentner, Denise Swinger, Brad Alt, Jason Hamby, Johnny Burns, Chief Carlson, Sergeants Watson and Knapp, and myself. So beginning in October of 2016, I met individually with Brenda, one-on-one for a total of 10 times. It was approximately an hour and a half each time. And then, in addition, the full supervisory staff met with Brenda in four different sessions for a total of 24 hours. And during this time, we conducted a lot of different exercises that helped us learn our own individual methods of communication, how those methods are perceived by other people, helped us to understand how others can, how and why others communicate, and to understand how to interpret that in the way that that person means it to be interpreted. It was really an interesting, an interesting exercise, and I enjoyed the, not only the one-on-one sessions, but the sessions with my staff, I thought were really very good. And I listed some of the specific activities there that we went through with this training. There was the StrengthsFinder workshop, where each of us took individual tests that showed our different traits, where our strengths lie, where areas perhaps were not quite as strong, that we could work on and improve. Model the way in trust. We discovered our own values and how people develop individual values based on different things, like their upbringing, their culture, their heritage, different things like that. Inspire a shared vision and challenge the process. It might, not that my staff didn't already think outside the box, but this, this helped us do that a little bit better and a little bit more cohesively. Enable others to act and encourage the heart. Everybody likes to do things that they're good at. And if you're passionate about what you do, and you enjoy doing it, you're going to do a better job at it. And so this kind of helped us learn to focus on our strengths, and to form working teams with people who maybe have the strengths where we're not quite as strong, and we can work together to be a little bit more efficient and productive. And then each session had a homework assignments where the participants applied something they had learned in class to the workplace. And those were, I thought those were pretty interesting exercises. So staff came away from the training with a renewed appreciation for how we communicate in different ways, you know, based on the things in our lives, and the things that have influenced us as we've grown up and matured and gone through our lives. And we also came away with a few practical things, like project flow sheets, which there's a sample in the packet of a project flow sheet. And what we do is we take the project idea or title. For instance, right now, one of the things before council is the designated smoking areas. So that goes on the top line. A brief description is to determine on each public property if there will be a designated smoking area. If so, where that will be. The, it has a lead staff member, and also additional staff members who are working on that project. The desired outcome would be that each publicly-owned property has either a designated smoking area, or is specifically signed "No Smoking" because it's too small. And then the action steps and target dates. So that would be filled out, and then a target completion date. For instance, the target completion date for the smoking limitation is, I believe it's coming up next, at the next council meeting. So that would be prepared and ready for the next council meeting. So we came away with those things. We have a staff-wide habit of trying to summarize meetings via email and sending that out to the group, so that everybody can read it and comment on the recap to make sure everything has been adequately, everybody's on the same page and understands things in the same way. We came away with a renewed effort to try to minimize duplication of efforts, which ties into the learning where your strengths are, and working with someone who has strengths that are not the same as yours, but, so that you can build upon each other. And we also have established a practice of holding immediate supervisory staff meetings when unusual events occur to try to coordinate tasks and make sure everybody's on the same page. Luckily, that doesn't happen too often, but if it does, we're, we're ready to go. And the final thing is that Melissa and I are working together on professional development programs. So Melissa, you were at the training, Judy, you were at the training. Did you want to say anything? Is that?
I think you summed it up pretty well.
Does anyone have any questions? Council, audience?
With the project ID, idea flow sheets, what happens to those?
We bring them to staff meetings and update on them.
Do we have one on the utility roundup?
We don't have one on the utility roundup, but we can certainly create one and put Melissa's name on it.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Any other questions? Anyone?
No, good job. I, we appreciate staff, you and staff, the whole staff going through this. It was a lot of time and a lot of commitment, but we probably appreciate it, and we can obviously see some positive changes and positive developments out of it. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Next is managers' reports. You can keep talking.
I can keep talking. So council did see the resolution for the crew quarters tonight, and so we will be letting that contract, as noted in the resolution, and hopefully get that project on the road. The Bryan Center generator, we have a new generator. This is a generator that was bought several years ago, that was meant to go into the Bryan Center, and then, at that particular time, was not able to be adapted properly. Now it was able. Things have changed a little bit in the code that allowed us to do that. So the electric crew made that happen, and they took this piece of equipment that was essentially still brand-new and sitting in its, sitting in its crate out at the farm, and they got it cleaned up and repurposed it. And now this entire building has emergency power. Previously, it was only the police department that had emergency power, which was part of the reason that this building could not be used as a shelter, to shelter people in emergencies. So now that we have enough power to generate for the entire building, we can look again at this being a potential center to house people in an emergency, and which is a positive. I mean, it's wonderful that we can look at doing that again. So. Community resources, as part of the property formerly known as the C B E coming to the village for ownership, Community Resources had decided to resolve. So they transferred that property to the village, and part of the agreement was that once everything was said and done, anything that was left in that account would also come back to the village. That was finally done and closed out last week, I think. And so we did get a check from Community Resources for $22,185.50. And that's the last piece of the puzzle. I turned that over to Melissa. I'm not sure what line she put. Did you just put it in general fund?
Mm-hmm.
So that went into the general fund. And that, that piece of that book is finally closed.
And why did we decide to put it in the general fund?
That was, I couldn't really justify putting it anywhere else necessarily, so it just went into the general fund. And if council has other ideas for it, it could always be moved.
Well, what about the Economic Development Fund?
It could be.
Because that's where it originally came from.
Not really, but
No?
No, because the money from the Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund went to purchase the property. So that is, that is other grant funding that they've received. I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you that it's not a bad place. I would, I'm guessing that Melissa's of a mind that that fund is set, has been sitting there and not being used, so it could probably be transferred in at some other, at some point in the future.
Okay.
I would agree with you generally about that, that certainly it seems like that money should be used to market the property, or do improvements to the property, whatever needs to be done. Next.
Yard waste, a reminder that November is the last month, that Rumpke will pick up yard waste on the last Friday of the month. So this Friday, actually, is the last day to put yard waste out in the Rumpke bags that are available in the utility office. Please do not put them in other bags from someplace else, because Rumpke will not pick them up. It's part of the contract that I wasn't able to take and talk them out of. So if you have yard waste that you would like to have picked up by Rumpke and recycled as yard waste composted, then please get your bags from the utility office and have them out this Friday for pickup. This is the last Friday.
And they will come on Friday, even though it's the day after Thanksgiving?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The hardware store sells them also.
Oh.
Thank you. Council can see in the packet, I put in the annual wage adjustment survey that we did in the surrounding areas. Unfortunately, I did not get answers to two of them. Normally, there are eight. I did not get answers from two of them. Two of them are still in negotiations. But you can see the results of the other four surrounding areas and the wage increase that they're giving to their staff this year. Based on, excuse me, based on a review of this information, Melissa and I recommend a 2.5 percent wage adjustment for hourly employees. And if council is of a mind to do that, then we can bring that legislation, and that would be effective January 1. Or whichever pay period is immediately following January 1.
Okay.
All right. We will bring that to the next meeting. So upcoming topics, we will be bringing at some point when four staff members have an opportunity to sit down and talk. The state legislature passed a bill governing small cellular towers in public right-of-ways, and the bill essentially limits our rights as a municipality. And there are some areas that we can control, and there are some areas that we cannot control. They literally took away our right to control. So we are looking at other legislation that other municipalities have passed. I have been working with Chris, Denise, and Johnny, because Johnny is the one that handles all the electric poles in the village. So we've been working together to try to come up with a piece of legislation for the village that will help us to control this as much as we can under this bill. And at some point in the near future, this will be coming before council as a piece of legislation. We've also been reviewing the special event and Bryan Center rental process. Ruth Ann and Samantha Stewart, who is our coordinator of Parks and Recreation, have been working on that together to revamp the event form, as well as the process for submissions, and how it's shepherded through staff to make sure people get what they need at their events. And so we will be bringing that updated, that updated information to council in the future. We also are talking about things like possibly having permanent facilities for such events, where there's, excuse me, easily accessible electric and possibly restrooms. So we will be bringing some of that information. I actually got some information on prefabricated public restrooms at the ICMA conference, and it's really interesting that they have them, and you just drop them in on a slab and hook your utilities up, and you're ready to go. So sometime in the near future, we'll be bringing those topics back to council for discussion.
Can I ask about with the cell tower thing? Okay, so what kind of permit fee, application fee can we put on those?
Well, actually, that's one of the things that's not limited, department.
Nice.
So that is something that we're discussing. I know that one of the sample legislations we looked at had 200, 250, something like that, on the fee.
I mean, so we could make it 10,000 or whatever?
I think we would probably get deemed on 10,000. I like your thought process, but I think we would probably get deemed on that. But it can be substantially higher than what our regular rate structures for something like this.
But it's not, it's not a revenue.
Well, I'm thinking more of a preventative measure.
So.
And this is, this is on cell towers, specifically, right?
It's on small cell towers.
Right.
And small cell towers can be either freestanding, or they can be a smaller unit that attaches to an existing pole. And they're essentially, and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but essentially, the legislation says, we can't turn anybody down. We, they have to provide us with alternate sites, but we can't turn anybody down, and they can pretty much put it wherever they want. Correct, Chris?
Public property, we're talking?
I'm sorry?
We're talking about on public property, right?
In the right way, yes.
Right. Okay.
Yes, the, there are some legal challenges, like initiated by a number of communities against the legislation. There's a couple of different constitutional arguments. So far, on the rulings that I'm aware of, one is for municipalities, one is against. I'm being told that there's some negotiations going on in the legislature, perhaps revisit the language in the legislation, but that still hasn't been done. The municipality's biggest complaints start with, one, it's our, it's municipality's property. They shouldn't be required to just give it away. They shouldn't be able to lease it. Instead of the, this legislation, which says there's a one-time fee, essentially, it can be put wherever the provider wants to put it. And the best that a community can hope to do is put in some aesthetic standards. So, I mean, imagine if a company wanted to come in and put a new cell tower in a historic district, or your commercial district, and it wasn't really compatible with the aesthetics. So the various municipal agencies, a lot of municipal attorneys' associations, the organizations that Patty belongs to, have all put forward, they can't force some stuff to, some things to address those issues in a broad sense. Cincinnati and Cleveland were the first communities to write some comprehensive legislation that they passed a while ago. And we're just trying to tailor something that fits Yellow Springs, because it's just, you know, every community's a little different.
What's the rationale behind this?
Strong lobbying. I think that that's the general consensus.
And I'm guessing that it's a communications issue, that they're saying it's open communications, that they need to provide communications, that they need to provide accessible communications.
Yeah, and I, I think it's fair. While there is a strong lobbying group, I think that the, one aspect of it is that it's, it's the difference between, okay, a large cell tower provides you with this broad base of coverage, but you can't put large cell towers everywhere. Uh, and so the mini cell towers would then pick up these gaps that all of this experience and how frustrating that is. Um, I think that most people would agree that there needs to be some way to, to bridge the gap, as it were, but I think that the loss of local control is what's been the most troubling to municipalities.
Sure.
But I am assuming that these, so these are going on existing poles?
Some of them are going...
Not necessarily.
Some of them are going on existing poles and some of them are going on their own poles that are then erected in the right of way and the, the small towers attach to the top.
Okay.
There's some that I found from what we've seen is they're on the ground.
Yeah.
I mean, in ideal world, find a roof to put it on, put it behind the sod or something. And because they're not all...
But I assume they're, they are, are they talking to private property owners too? I mean, is this, I, I would...
I don't know. They may be, but I'm not sure that they would because a private property owner could extract more money from them or private lease than when a municipality has to give it away for free.
Right. And, and, and we, we, there has been some interest from companies that want to put small cell towers in the village in the right of way. So we do need to get this legislation written so that we have, um, something that we can say, here are the conditions.
Okay.
Well, I, I am interested in, in knowing what's the most restrictive we can be. So, in terms of that, you know, permit fee and everything. I mean, the last cell tower we put in didn't even benefit the village, so...
Right.
Thanks.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Melissa?
Okay, um, lodging tax information. Um, I know that this is a discussion point at the next meeting, but I thought that I would, um, just put out there that I've been working really hard on, um, getting documents, um, created and put online. And, um, I've got a whole page dedicated to lodging tax and I also have the permit application that can be submitted online, which I'm really excited about. Um, so we have tested that and it seems to be working, but, um, I think that one was submitted just this evening. So, um, I will ask Denise tomorrow to check that out and make sure that it works. So, um, I will be open to suggestions, so if everybody can check that out and, um, we can discuss that more in detail at the next meeting. Um, some future, uh, two pieces of future legislation that will have to come, um, in meeting, upcoming meetings. Uh, the first one is House Bill 49 legislation. Um, this is basically, um, House Bill 49 was passed early in 2017 and it had a number of different income tax changes and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's been a while since this has been discussed. But, um, the, the change that, the changes that need to happen and passed by us before January 31st of 2018 are just definition and due date changes. So, um, I will have more information on that in the next, uh, packet, um, when it will be presented. I think it's on the, yes, it's on the next, uh, meeting. So I will have some more information, um, that's been put out by, uh, the Regional Income Tax Authority that takes care of our income taxes for us. They prepared, uh, the legislation, um, for us so that it, uh, meets all the requirements. So that will be upcoming. Um, the next item will be some utility dispute resolution board changes. Um, we had a, we had to convene the board, um, a week or two ago and, um, the board kind of discussed, um, some procedural changes or some, we discussed some procedures that aren't necessarily spelled out. So we will have, um, some legislation come before council just to outline and make clear some, uh, changes in procedure. Actually, they're not really changes, they're just outlines of procedure that did not previously exist, just so everybody's clear.
Melissa, while we're talking about that, um, it had come up that we need to have that tax board as well. Is, are we gonna then make this board both or what's the...
Um, I know that we were wanting to do that. I, I wasn't, I know that Patty was working on that and I think that she had, uh, Chris involved and Judy as well, so I'm not really sure where that landed and if we're there yet, so...
Um, I believe we're going to do that, correct, Chris?
Well, we'll have, we'll need two different boards, but they will be staffed by the same people.
Correct, and, um...
Or that's what we're proposing.
And that's likely, that's likely how it will come out.
Okay.
And at the same time, when we do that, um, the proposal is going to be to actually change the way the board is set up because right now the board consists of Melissa as the finance manager, Johnny as the electric superintendent, myself, and two citizens. And I do not like that, uh, that composition. I think it should be the finance manager, the electric superintendent, and three citizens. Um, I should not be on that board because generally, um, that has already come to me for a decision before it's appealed to them and, um, I just think it's better to have three citizens on that board than three staff members. So we'll be making that composition or proposing to make that composition change at the same time.
Okay. And can you remind me, I, I remember that we had to have that board, but what, where did it come up? What was it related to?
Well, utility dispute resolution board, we also created a, a few of boards for the lodging...
It's for the lodging tax, okay. Thank you.
Right.
So, is that it?
Okay, um, the utility billing software, uh, conversion, I have chose to delay it. There were still some bugs that, um, I was uncomfortable with moving forward and going live with, so I asked the company to kind of pump the brakes on that because I want to make sure that it's absolutely perfect before it goes live. Um, and then the last thing for me are sidewalk projects. Um, Xenia Avenue sidewalk project, um, in my report, it said it was nearly finished, but it is finished. Um, so that was the, uh, CDBG grant through Greene County. Um, Safe Routes to School is still ongoing. Um, I think that they have most of the concrete down. Um, I know that a lot of residents have been concerned because of gaps between the concrete and, um, and the dirt, um, but none of that has been graded out yet. So, a lot of the drainage and the, the grading and everything is yet to be completed. Um, and I did note, as everybody else has been well aware, we've had a very, very wet fall, so, um, everything is still moving ahead quite nicely, uh, even as a result of all that wet weather that we've had, so...
Yeah, it was really cool to walk on, I've gotta say. Um, the extension up to Stafford, when does that happen?
Um, with the kind of transition of staff that we've had, I can't give you a definite answer on that unless Patty has a better idea, but I know that it, it was in process getting, uh, different quotes and things and I'm not sure if...
Okay.
...a contractor was selected.
Uh, contractor has not been selected on that yet. I think Jason had two of the three quotes that had been returned to him, so I have to see if a third quote had come in yet.
Because that's just like a...
We don't get that done. I mean, we, we're, we're nearing the point of no return.
Right. We, we will, I mean, the only thing I can say is we'll do our best to get it done and if we don't get it done this fall, we'll get it done in the spring because we have committed to doing that.
Will there be a dangerous transitional situation that'll have to be mitigated?
Um, I don't think so because it will just be, it will just stop and turn into grass at that point. Um, and then, but, um, I, I know that Jason had two of the, two of the quotes and was waiting on the third. I just don't know if that came in. Um, and I know that, that Johnny was checking his emails today, um, so I'll ask him.
And can the contractor just continue? Did you get a quote from the contractor who did?
I believe he was one of the, he was one and then Chris Durst was one, the one that was doing the ramps on Xenia was the second one. And he had asked for a third one, so...
Okay.
And that's it for me.
Thank you. Chief?
I'm not sure why I brought this paperwork up here. Uh, we are pleased to announce that we are announcing that we're pleased. Um, we are, uh, in the process, as you know, of our promotion for corporal positions. We are also hiring two full-time officers. Those applications, uh, that will end December 1st. We'll be doing preliminary testing December 16th and we've, uh, had a good turnout of applicants come through the department. A reminder for everyone, Jerry touched on how it is getting darker earlier. Uh, please, if you can remember, turn on your porch lights a little earlier. Also, check your, uh, addresses on your homes, even though we do have Google, all it tells us is your destination is on the right.
Okay.
Any questions?
Um, actually, I, I had mentioned this to, uh, a while back, but on the activity report, under B, can we change that to village policing instead of community policing? Just so that's in line with our, um, guidelines? And again, I appreciate that we're, uh, including that in the reports.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Judy?
Just that it's been super busy. We've had a lot of records requests, lots of meetings, lots of minutes. Um, orientation has now been set for, for new council members. That'll take place all day on December 7th and the morning of December 8th. And village staff are certainly looking forward to getting to know new council folks. Um, any ordinances which occur before the end of the year are gonna have to be read unless they're, then they'll start the next meeting. But anything that has to come to December 18th will be read as an emergency because otherwise you have to change the title and then you have to start all over again. So if you see a lot of emergencies happening on December 18th, don't be alarmed. About it?
Thank you. Patty, you have a couple other things?
I do. Um, the flour and sugar deliveries were today, um, so if for some reason you should have gotten flour and sugar and you did not get flour and sugar, please call Ruth Ann at my office at 767-3402 and let her know that and we will make sure that that gets delivered. Um, and also, uh, I forgot to announce that I am on vacation again next week and Melissa will be here and she will be handling anything. So if anyone needs anything, please contact Melissa down in the finance office.
Can we get a quick update on the, uh, the coats too? Because I know that happened.
The coat, oh, the coat shopping? I'll tell you what, uh, I love doing coat shopping with the kids. Uh, it is just so much fun. We had, uh, what, 24 kids this year, Chief? And there were, um, six of us and so each of us had three children and, uh, it, I just, it was great. We went to Giovanni's for lunch with them and, uh, then we went and got the shoes and the coat, hat, and gloves. Um, and surprisingly, Sears does not sell scarves anymore, uh, winter scarves.
They, they did, but we found that one individual had taken them and stuffed them in the...
Wow!
One of the others, so we, we, we don't know if someone was playing and taking them, but...
So, um, but anyway, we had a, we had a great time. We had a great time with the kids and, uh, I was, I, I, I felt really good because I got, I got requested by one of the children that I had been with, uh, a couple of years ago and he is the sweetest little guy. And, uh, it was just great and I'm going, I'm getting on the bus and he goes, "Miss Bates, I'm with you." And I'm like, "Okay."
Because he knew you would let him get those high tops, right?
Yeah, well, actually, he didn't get high tops. He did not get high tops.
Well, I do want to pass along, uh, Principal Haus, uh, noted that he was very impressed that village staff spent that amount of time, um, to, to do this and he just thought it was great that, uh, that the village, you know, takes the time and makes the effort to, uh, to support those kids, so thank you.
Um, it, I, I, speaking for myself and I'm pretty sure I'm speaking for the other staff members that went, it was our pleasure. I mean, it's just such a great thing and it's so much fun. And, uh, we had, we had a couple of new people this year who hadn't gone before and it, it was, uh, pretty interesting for them and, but everybody had a really good time and I think the kids were, were pretty happy at the end of the day.
That's great.
Cool.
That's kind of a reminder that, um, I believe that the giving tree at the library is, was set up today. So somebody wants to give, uh, pick one of the pieces of paper off the tree and give a gift to somebody, that would be great. Um, we'll do a brief board and commission report since most of our, most of the reports are from members who are gone. Jerry, I know you had a very productive planning commission meeting.
Uh, yes, and it was noted in, um, Denise's report.
Could you just give, just a brief review of the two projects?
Yeah, brief, uh, let's see. Uh, number one, we, uh, had the fire department come, come forth and, uh, made the presentation, uh, to planning commission. Uh, their, uh, application was approved with, with conditions and, uh, and, and I have to commend that because, uh, you know, we, we talk about the community being walkable and, uh, with, uh, the fire department, we asked for, um, bike racks as, as part of their condition. Uh, the second one was Cresco's. That was kind of interesting also, in fact, of how they had the designer building to fit in, fit into, uh, their space. Uh, we approved those with, again, uh, bike rack and, and also we, we specified that the fence would be black so there'd be no confusion as, as to the, uh, to the fence. And let's see, who's the third one, Judy? Was it the third? It seemed like we had three.
No, you did, well, there was a site plan review, but then there was also the replat that happened for Cresco, so...
The replat, right, yeah. And, and we did approve the, the replat for, um, Dayton Street so that, uh, the, uh, world would be built to our specifications based upon the engineer. There was, uh, uh, one area we, uh, and luckily that had to do with drainage. If, and, uh, so drainage issue should not be issued while we're out, out there, so...
Okay. Brian?
It was, was anticipated to be a long meeting, but it...
It was.
Very quick.
It, it, it was intense, but it was quick and, and, and all three of the applicants were able to answer the planning commission's concerns. Yeah, so, that's good.
Jerry, I think I've got in front of you a few, while you're recording...
Yeah, I'm, can I, must do that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, now, next one is, is library. Uh, we, we have seven possible seats to fill, uh, and we're filling them five. I have five nominations for you. Uh, the first one is, uh, Joseph Carr, uh, young gentleman, uh, one of the few younger, uh, folks that we're, we're now getting to, uh, want to serve on, on our commissions and so forth, so, and we were very pleased. He's an active user of the library, uh, and, uh, he has, if I'm correct, he has some degrees in library studies and so forth. His family uses the library, they love the reading program. So we're recommending him for one of the positions. The next person they'll recommend is Rebecca Eshman?
Eshman.
Eshman. Uh, Rebecca has been on the library committee, the library, uh, board for, for 12 years. Uh, she's currently active in, as a special consultant to the current, uh, library, uh, Yelle Springs Library Association, excuse me. And, um, she, uh, will, and she, hers is a reappointment, so...
And why isn't that clear?
Next one is Dorothy Smith and, uh, she is a heavy user of the library, particularly ours. She believes in, and strongly in importance and the, uh, sensuality of library to the community. Uh, she's retired. She spent 30-plus years working in libraries, uh, as a, uh, archivist at, uh, Wright State University and also Hebrew Union College in, uh, Cincinnati. The next one is Richard Zoff. Uh, Richard has, has been with us for years, but, but what he brings and continually brings is his, he, he, he's kind of the hands-on guy that gets dirty and, uh, and he helps the rest of the commission to, uh, look at what's practical and, and take the goodies off. And, uh, so, and he, uh, is, uh, and he knows the building. He knows the building real well.
Very much so.
And we, we feel that, uh, and we want to definitely retain someone that has some history on the, on the village, on the, on the building, excuse me. on the, on the village, on the, on the building, excuse me. Then we have LeAnn Duncan. Uh, her experience is, is about, number one, 20 years as a citizen of the village. Uh, she formerly had served on the library commission, uh, 23 years working on both public and academic libraries, and, uh, she has also been on the library commission for several years. So, those are the five that I want to nominate at this point.
And can I just ask, Jerry, are those all, um, full members, or...
Yeah, all, yeah, all, yeah, all for full members.
Okay. Uh, second?
Uh, all those in favor, seeing if anybody's saying aye?
Aye. Looks like a good crew.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jerry. Uh, Brian?
Uh, yeah, so, um, first of all, with the Arts and Culture Commission, I just wanted to, um, get a save the date out there for January 19th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is gonna be the official reopening of the Bryan Center Gallery, and, uh, Bryan Center Community Gallery, I should say, and, um, I believe the, uh, the focus of the show is going to be on the banners that used to hang around town, um, and when we changed the poles, the, the size of the banners changed. Um, and, uh, related to that, Patty, uh, I know the Arts Council is, is starting to look at, um, storing the art in the room that we found.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I guess if we can find a new home for that island huge piece that I guess is in there now...
There's not enough room for them to still do that?
Uh, they thought maybe it, there wouldn't be, so I don't know if we can find another place for it, but...
I'm not sure, but I'll look at it.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, with the, well, and I guess one other thing is, uh, the Arts and Culture Commission is looking at supporting a, uh, project, uh, for Mills Lawn that's relating, related to, uh, Willing Gaunt, and it's, uh, also involving creating a book that, uh, highlights our African-American elders in town, so, uh, it looks like a really cool project. And we're also gonna be submitting something, um, for some of the equipment that we need for the gallery, um, which will, you know, be part of the budget that council already approved. Um, and then with the Economic Sustainability Commission, um, I guess the main thing is we wanna try to sort of wrap up the revolving loan fund, uh, piece that we brought to council a couple meetings ago, and so Melissa, I know you've been busy, and Chris as well, but I, I think, uh, maybe the last piece was kind of in your guys' court, um, related to the legal parts, and then also what was gonna happen with, um, the, uh, credit union. So, I don't know if it's possible to get that together before the end of the year, but that would be nice. And that's all I have.
Okay. Um, Green County Regional Planning Commission, um, past couple meetings, we've only haven't done, uh, much in terms of subdivisions or anything else. Uh, we've been working on the budget, um, for Green County regional planning, and it's looking like, um, Ken LeBlanc will be retiring sometime in 2018, um, and there will be, um, looking for a replacement for him. And there is a meeting tomorrow night here in the Bryan Center, um, Green County Transportation Plan, um, at 6:30, 6 o'clock?
6:30, so, right?
I think 6:30, yeah. Um, Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, um, the last meeting, it was actually probably the most contentious one I've seen. It was, um, there's Brian Martin, who's the, who's the director, um, presented a plan for widening the section of two, of Route 35 from where it's three lanes in Dayton to 675, so that it's, it's probably about a mile stretch, maybe a mile and a half stretch, where it's two lanes.
Two lanes.
And it is bumper to bumper in the mornings and in the evenings. It's been on the, it's been on the project list for about 30 or 40 years. It needs to get done, um, and so there was a funding proposal presented that, that almost the, the entire board, um, supported. Um, there was concern expressed from Green County because of the concern that all of that, that three lanes of traffic is basically going to then funnel down to the two lanes in, at 675 going into Green County, except for the fact that probably at least half of that traffic is exiting off 675.
Traffic gets off.
So, it's a little bit of, you know, 35, the 35 project, the green, 35 green project is on the books, it's gonna get done, it's gonna be the, it's gonna be the, um, super street, but it shouldn't stop or prioritize, be prioritized over this project. That's my opinion, and that's the opinion of everybody else that was there, except Commissioner Blazer.
Blazer.
Yes, of course.
Oh, by the way, and it's 6:00 p.m. tomorrow, is the third, fifth thing, yeah.
6:00 p.m., okay. Uh, so that was really all with Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. The chamber, um, I can announce our, uh, new board members. Incoming board members, um, are, include Minerva Bieri, Berry, Sarah Portwright, Jerry Dear, and Dave Amon. Um, and outgoing board members, as of, uh, the first of the year, Craig Meesher, Sheila Dunphy-Palata, Molly Lundie, Randy Gifford, and Bruce Grimes. Um, almost all of those, all except Bruce. Bruce served three years, and, and the other four served six years, which is the maximum, um, in a row. Um, and two things I should have mentioned, um, when I was doing announcements. Uh, first, um, we are doing a decorating contest for downtown, but we'd like to extend that to the rest of town, um, for folks to put out some lights, and last year, if you recall, um, with the hotel, was completely lit up. Um, we actually lit the tree across the street in the, in the lawn of the funeral home, and we're actually gonna be doing that again tomorrow night. So, we would really like to see it, and I wanna thank, uh, Johnny Burns, the electric, electric department, for getting up our candy cane, um, lights on the, on the light poles and the banners on the, on the light poles also, so we need to get some more lights and decorations up, so... And I, and I do believe that the Arts and Culture Commission are gonna be, they're gonna be judging, um, the, the decorating contest.
And what time is the tree light?
The tree lighting's at 6 o'clock, and there will be hot cocoa from Dino's Coffee, and there will be, um, pretzel bites from Bresl, is it, is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Okay, so, food and drink.
Six...
Okay.
Six o'clock, okay.
6 o'clock, yeah, two things at 6 o'clock, so I can only do one.
Are, are you, you guys encouraging people to walk, to...
Sure, and where are your light? Decorate, where are your lights?
That's right, red and green.
Um, so, future agenda items, um, I have a feeling the next two meetings are gonna be very full, um, so Melissa, we've got the ordinance in response to House Bill 49, um, and I know what Utility Dispute Resolution Board procedures, wage increase, so we've got, um, JSTF report on TASER policy. I mean, I guess we're gonna have the, um, are we gonna have a further report on the study, on the survey, the...
Well, Judith's letter did say the first meeting in December, so...
Okay, well, let's put that on there. Well, what are we calling it? What is this? Citations and warnings report?
You know, the last, the last time that you had two of them on, Mary Ann brought up this notion that you had decided not to have two kinds of reports at a time from a, from a commission. Just, I'm just throwing that out there, you could move on forward.
Um, let's, we, let's put them both on, um, and maybe, I, I guess, I feel like we do need to have that citations and warning report, simply because it's, it's been a priority. Um, the TASER policy, I am not sure, I think maybe, let's move that one to December 18th. Okay? So, the, the TASER policy will be December 18th. So, we'll continue the board and commission discussion, Melissa will have a presentation and information on the lodging tax implementation, outreach specialist, um, funding and job description discuss, discussion, um, complete streets policy, that's something that you're bringing, Brian.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we are starting, um, the meeting at 5:30. From 5:30 to 7:00, we will have an executive session, um, we will be reviewing our village manager.
So, what time do you want me to be here? At 5:30 or at 6:00?
Probably 6:00 would work.
And, um, also, um, two things, Johnny Burns would like to come and speak briefly about possibly buying a valve exercise machine out of the contingency fund for the water plant, because it is part of what the EPA is asking us to do, um, with our new water plant, and so he has some information on the machines and a couple of quotes, and he would like to come and talk to council about that. And then, uh, Brian, I think, would like to do a celebration of, or acknowledgement of the three civilians that intervened, uh, downtown a couple of weeks ago when a woman was attacked.
Mm-hmm.
And so Brian would like to do an acknowledgement of that.
So, we'll do that in the beginning, Brian?
That's what we're thinking.
First thing? December 4th?
Fourth, okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
At the beginning?
Yes.
And did you want nominating petition information to, can I, I can just throw that into the clerk report?
I've, I've got that, I've got that in the last one.
You've got, okay.
Um, because it seems to me, from what I've heard, you're, it seems that we could do the legislation, what kind, is it, is it gonna be a resolution or an ordinance? So, it'd be a resolution?
On which piece?
The nominating, nominating petition.
I don't know. What do you think, Judy?
The charter doesn't say anything about the particular form that's used, so I...
I would be to a resolution.
Yeah, so...
I would lean towards a resolution right now.
So, I would say, since we've talked about it, I would say that we can do that at the last, I mean, we already just really filled this meeting up, so I don't think, I don't wanna try to do it on the 4th, um, because there's some needy subjects there.
Yeah.
So, we'll have a supplemental, we may very well have, um, amending fee schedule for transient guest lodging permits, we may very well have other legislation, um, as we finish up the end of the year, designated smoking areas and signage, the nominating petition that we just added, and Bowen is coming off of the agenda. They, Patty had a communication...
They haven't responded quite yet, though. If they wanna come off of that agenda, or, and go to the January 2nd agenda, or not. I sent that to them, asking them if that was, uh, an acceptable move for them, and they haven't responded back with the schedule yet, so...
Well, I'm expecting that they're going to.
I, and I would too, but...
Um, they just felt like they needed a little bit more time to prepare.
Well, and it, maybe that makes sense, too.
Right, no, it's, I, I think it's, I think it's probably good.
So, you said, so it's a January 2nd meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, can we, for the, the 18th, can we also put the revolving loan fund as a, if we can get that together?
But as actual legislation?
Uh...
You know, for a type of legislation, yours is gonna have to be on the December 4th, because council hasn't even been...
Okay.
And I, I'm assuming it might have to be a resol, or an ordinance and not a resolution?
Yeah, and I...
It's money.
I will tell you that it, really, we're looking at whether or not we can partner with the credit union, because we discussed it.
Okay.
Let's tentatively put it on the agenda, and, you know, maybe it's something that just needs to wait. I know Brian was hoping to get it done, and I was hoping to get it done while I was still on council, but that just may not happen.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're done.
Well...
Motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor, seeing if anybody's saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.